Welcome back to the Select Committee on Victoria Planning Provision Amendments, VC 257, 267 and VC 274. Before we move into witness evidence, could I just point out that in terms of witnesses today, all evidence taken is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act of 1975 and the provisions of the Legislative Council standing orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same things, those comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered a contempt of parliament, and all evidence is being recorded. You'll be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing. Transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee's website. For the hands-off record, can you please state your names and the organisation that you'll be appearing on behalf of?
Hi there, Dan. I was Assistant Secretary Appointed Victorian Trades Hall Council.
And Tiana Crawford, Politics and Research Lead Organizer at Victorian Trades Hall Council.
Thank you and welcome, and we appreciate you attending and your submission on very short notice. Please, would you like to make an opening statement?
Thank you so much. Thank you to committee members for having us along. I recognise this is on very short notice, and I do want to note that, thank you for the work that you do. Committee work often goes unnoticed, and it's an enormous amount of work behind the scenes, but we notice it and we value your work, so thank you for that upfront. Housing is important to workers, that's why I am here today. It's not a theoretical question for workers. We all, I think we all are in furious agreement about why housing is so important, but I just wanted to spell this out because I think that there's a bunch of speakers that are appearing before the committee, which, interesting to listen as an outsider to all the different views of even within the planning sector, there seems to be a diversity of views, but I don't think many of them have been able to speak to the practical applications and what this means for workers in Victoria as well too, and why it is our, why we want to appear today to make this contribution as well too. We surveyed workers at the end of last year in our database and our system, and cost of housing was the number two issue for them, that won't surprise you at all. Cost of living was the number one issue, number two, cost of housing. Next was education, health. So it's incredible to see that cost of housing is just such a critical issue to Victorian workers. And one thing I wanted to draw attention to, which we didn't put in our submission, but I've been looking at since because it was on such short notice, is the clear link, the clear link between stable housing and employment, and how important stable housing is for employment as well. So more working people are seeking homelessness services than ever before. I'm just going to refer to a couple of statistics here. Working people are seeking homelessness services grew 14% in 2023. One in eight people seeking homelessness services are employed. Women make up 60 to 75% of the homeless people in LGAs where working people are seeking those homelessness services. The LGA with the largest number of people seeking support for homelessness services is in Casey, where 78% of people seeking support are employed women. This number has grown 41% between 2021 and in the last couple of years. People experiencing homelessness have reduced employment outcomes. The labour force participation rate in Australia is about 66%. Amongst people experiencing homelessness, it's 45%. And it's an old ABS data now, but it found that 30% of people actively experiencing homelessness were currently employed. So we really need to look at and reflect on the links between the importance of stable housing for stable employment. Those two things go hand in hand, but we all know why this is so important. It's hard to be employed when you are unhoused, and increasingly, employees are finding themselves unhoused. We recognise that there's a crisis going on globally, and that we're dealing with this in Victoria as well too. I also just want to acknowledge that Victorian workers are not a homogenous group. We're not all the same, we don't all look the same. We're a really diverse cohort as well too, and we proudly represent Victorian Union members. And our housing needs are diverse as well too. We need apartments, we need homes, we need backyards, we need units, we need studios. Where we need those housing will change in our lifetimes as well too, and our needs will change in our lifetime as well too. We need social, public, affordable housing, and we need it in a variety of locations, and we need it to be fairly distributed across the city and across the state, and with access to good services, good amenities, and with access to jobs. You talk to workers so often, and one of the biggest challenges and one of the bugbears, and union organisers will know this, is talking about how long it takes you to get to your job. It really is an impact on your, I was going to say joy, but that might not be the word, but you know, livability of your city is how long it takes you and what it's like to transit to work. So those are some of the comments I make. We're all in furious or in furious agreement about the need for more housing, and I think we are in agreement about the government's role is to increase housing supply, and that these amendments do that, although there's been some discussion about that. I just wanted to make some comments briefly about consultation as well too, because I won't go, I won't go deeply into the ins and outs. You've got plenty of planning experts here to talk about the ins and outs of the amendments. But in terms of consultation, in our submission, we did talk about the extensive consultation that we have participated in over the many, many years around this, this planning, housing, transport as well too, to a lesser extent, the consultation that we've participated in. And we would always say, and we would always furiously agree with everyone that would take this position on the panel, that workers need to be, and workers are entitled to and deserve to be consulted about what happens in their neighbourhood, what happens in their street, what happens in their community. And workers need to be consulted in that as well too. And we would take a very inclusive view about what that consultation should look like. So it's not just the worker who lives in that street, it's the worker who takes the bus down that street to get to their cleaning job in the next suburb over. It's the worker who works at the cafe at the corner block at the end of that street, who rides their bike there and does eight hours, five days a week, in that cafe. That's their community too. And it's the workers who are working really hard to save for a mortgage to buy an apartment that's being built at the end of that street as well too. All of these workers and all of these people deserve to be consulted and included. And further to that, I talk about, you know, governments need to be responding constantly. You are responding to changes in the community and responding to the crisis and all those sorts of things. And consultation can also happen, I don't want to say on the go, that's not what I mean, but you should be constantly consulting on the policy changes and the policy levers that you have, and so you can implement these amendments, you can be, continue to consult and work with them, and if you need to come back to make modifications, you can do that. Do you know what I mean? Like consultation can happen while you are also responding to the crisis that's in front of us. And if I, I know I need to wrap up, I will. And if I can, you know, briefly take my Trades Hall hat off, in a former, in a previous life, I've served as a councillor and as a mayor, and I know deeply and personally, I know deeply and personally how challenging this space is. I do. I feel it for you all deep. I was on Yarra City Council, so I was on my local city council as well too. I represented Collingwood, which is, we're a rich and a wealthy area in a council, but Collingwood is the area with the highest rate of social, public and affordable housing in the state. And I can feel it deeply, that I understand deeply what it's like dealing with the planning system and making sure that the planning system, which at times feels old and clunky, is responding to the needs of the community. So there's few decisions that can be more tense at times than dealing with planning decisions as well too. So I, I understand what that feels like, but that's what it means to be, to be represented, to, elected to represent your community is to make those decisions. So I'll stop there. I'll just say though, we're excited to be here. We would love to talk to you about lots of other things as well. Let's get on with the business of building more houses, putting more housing supply into the, into the market. Then let's talk about, you know, key worker housing. New South Wales is doing an inquiry right now into key worker housing, and I don't like it when New South Wales is ahead of us, so let's catch up on that. We would love to talk about recommendations made in previous submissions about making rentals more safe and affordable. We'd love to talk about the right to shelter, you know, there's, we'd love to talk about more public and social housing. I will pull up stumps there.
Thank you. And look, thank you for your passionate advocacy there.
If nothing more-
We're broken up!
I guess, one of the things I-
If nothing more, Ms MacArthur and I will both be enthusiastic about our, about our positions.
Especially what is a woman, I love your earrings.
I think we all recognise that homelessness is a huge issue, and I guess there's two questions. One is striking to, how do we best address that as an issue? But I guess, more particularly notwithstanding your very exciting menu of things that we could talk about, probably what we are actually here to talk about-
Yes.
-is the three planning amendments.
Yes.
So I'm actually going to try and bring the discussion back to that if I may, and obviously keen to have all of my colleagues do the same. Could I just ask, in terms of the planning scheme amendments that are before us, is there anything there that you see that will actually improve the supply of affordable housing? And I mean affordable housing, as Mr Bachelor pointed out, with a capital A, as in a class of housing specifically, at a lower price for those, and for essential workers. Are you seeing anything in these amendments that will actually increase that supply of affordable and essential worker housing? And especially, I suppose, compared to what's existed previously?
Yeah. I think the comments I make is actually referring back to the speaker who, was it Mr Brooks who spoke beforehand as well too, who said there's a clear tie between any evidence of, there's a clear link of evidence that increasing the housing supply helps those in need at the most, at the bottom most, at pushing up access to housing. So even if the amendments, and correct me if I'm wrong on these ones, don't have specific clauses about essential worker housing, which we are happy to have those conversations about that as well too, and affordable housing clauses in them as well, any increase in more housing will help open up, will help increase access for essential workers and access to more affordable housing too. So we want to see a plethora of more housing options.
So are you agreeing with the Centre for Independence Studies that-
Was that Mr Brooks who was beforehand as well?
That was Mr Chewler up on the telly. But are you suggesting that actually this can be achieved through a market mechanism rather than actual specific regulation? Because there is no regulation for essential workers within these amendments.
Yeah.
And the only reference to affordable housing, as in a class of housing, is an objective to encourage it, but it doesn't actually mandate it. So I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts on that.
Yeah, we would always support targeted legislation or targeted clauses or targeted amendments that are about affordable housing and essential worker housing. The thing I would say, and it's funny because that comment you made there, I was going to say, you know, housing is a human right, we should recognise housing as a human right, and it just kind of sucks how dependent we are to work with developers on this as well too. So yes, I would advocate for government intervention to encourage, steer, direct the market to ensure that we've got all cohorts or all sectors of housing covered.
Okay. Can I switch the subject slightly? Looking at workers as citizens, and I think you were going into that spaces in terms of participation and democracy, clearly these amendments, in certain circumstances, remove the rights of people to object to development, and in other circumstances, it actually removes the right of people to even receive notice of pending development. How does, how do you sit with that proposition?
Yeah, my understanding is that the circumstances in which that occur are very narrow and very specific, and you need to meet all the standards for that third party appeals to be removed. But as a principle, I would go back to our original one, which is that workers should be informed, they should be consulted, and they should be able to participate in a decision-making process.
Okay. But in the activity centres, obviously, it's actually much broader than that. What you're saying is more generally, yes, but in activity centres, in the absence of a specific mandating, there is no right to notification?
My understanding is with the activity centres, and I had someone in our team, in the policy team, have a look at it, the consultation that's gone underway for activity centres and for the suburb, the SRL as well too, and it was pages long, the engagement and the community consultation that was underway. If there was any criticism, I would provide of that actually, when we looked at the, when we looked at the data, when we looked at the participation, the only comment I would make is that there was low contributions from people that had English as a second language. The submissions that were made in languages other than English was low.
Thank you. Mr Davis?
I'm just reading your submission, and you note there that you've made submissions to Victoria's housing statement, electrification, minimum standards, rental housing affordability, Victoria's big build-in priority precincts. I wonder if we might have copies of those submissions?
We should be able to. We should be able to provide all of them. I don't think we made submissions in every one of those cases. I think I say, in some cases where submissions are made. I don't think we made written submissions about priority precincts, I want to say.
I think we've been consulted widely through some of the processes, but whatever written submissions we have, very happy to forward them on.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure priority precincts, because I was in that consultation, I remember it, so with the department, so I'm, but I don't think it was a written one.
And, you know, you're a former councillor, Ms Oster, and I note in this submission here, you say, "In many ways though, the planning system based on appeals to VCAT is geared to a small number of vested interests."
Um, yeah.
I just, look, I'm sorry, I recoil at that. I think that people have democratic rights, people should have a say in the future of their suburb.
Absolutely.
And they should not have planning changes made without consultation, which strip them of their rights to appeal, but also fundamentally change longstanding characteristics. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely. I would say that we, the broad statements I said at the start about consultation and participation and workers, and we take that very inclusive view of what it means to be consulted and workers being consulted. And I guess with my previous hat on, like, let's not think that participating in the plan, in the whole planning scheme system and the VCAT system is a level and equal playing field for everyone to participate in. My lived experience from that was that it wasn't working people that were taking up these decisions.
But the issue here is that people are actually being stripped of their right to have a say.
In very limited, my understanding is in limited circumstances when all the standards have been met.
I have to disagree with you about limited. I'd have to say the fact is, they are. But let's, let's move on. I want to ask you something else. I imagine that you strongly believe that there is a climate crisis and that we need to have sufficient tree canopy.
Yes.
Many of these changes will see the denuding of large areas of the city, because they will see blocks, large blocks stripped of tree canopy with very little control. Isn't that counter to the objectives of protecting the city in terms of its tree canopy and climate objectives?
I won't speak. I don't know if I can fully respond to it. Absolutely, we support action on climate change at every level of government. Tree canopy is just one of a thousand things that government needs to be doing and taking responsibility for. There are some energy and climate relevant clauses in these amendments that are being dealt with. I can't speak to, and I don't know the percentage that is around tree canopy. We need to be balancing up housing, which is also a human right. We need to be balancing up the importance of housing with making sure that we have green spaces across the city as best as we possibly, possibly accommodate.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr Burger?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for your appearance this morning.
Chair, I should disclose that as my former role as the branch secretary of the transport workers, you're going to add some significant dealings with Trades Hall, in particular with Dinae, so I think that should be just put on the record.
Madge of honour.
In your opening today, you talked about the access to jobs and is dependent on transport. I would just wonder, you know, from your affiliate members, is there a particular group that has more, has more vocalised it with you and the council in respect to the housing issues?
As in particularly with respect to access to transport? I'm thinking about, there is a couple of cohorts that are coming to mind as well. I'm thinking particularly about shift workers and unions that represent shift workers as well too, talk to us a lot about access to large sites like airports, access to the airports for shift workers, and how do we have, need to be close to, as much as possible, we want people to be closest to their places of work. And so how do we make sure that we have more transport options, particularly for shift workers? So, and that's not just nurses as well too, that's cleaners and security guards that I'm particularly thinking about, like United Workers Union, constantly advocating for better and more transport options for their, for their members as well too. I'm also thinking about, and this is something else that is another component that some of our affiliates have advocated for as well, falls a bit out of the remit here as well too, which is like access to childcare on the way to work as well too, and making sure that your transport routes include childcare on the way, so childcare is either close to home or close to work as well too.
And sorry, can I just add to that? I think the other sort of cohorts that we're hearing from are young workers, women who are single women, workers who are workers of colour and migrant workers, and they're a highly mobile group of workers because often they live far away from their jobs, and so the interconnection between affordable housing and transport is really, I think, poignant for that group.
Yeah. And I suppose it then follows from there that people in the retail sector, given the, you know, the large concentration in some of the larger centres, that they need to be able to get affordable housing within those precincts, are you hearing any issues in respect to that?
Absolutely, particularly from young people who are working at universities, who need to be able to get to university to get back home so they can work at the local cafe or the local shops. And these activity centres will create more jobs in those, in those precincts and those areas, particularly for young workers in retail and in hospitality as well too.
Because we're hearing more and more of it, live where you work.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's a key to, you know, to-
And it's, it helps with tackling climate change as well too. The shorter distances that we have to travel to get to work will, will as well help with those matters as well too. But for more, I almost want to say more than just climate change, it's about livability of your city, how long you have to spend in transit to get to work.
And sorry, just another thing to add on that, with those vulnerable cohorts, they deserve quality amenities and quality communities, just as any worker does. And so we want to make sure, no matter what you do, no matter what job you have, no matter what age you are, no matter what your experience is, you can have, you know, easy access to public transport, but also easy access to a park, easy access to a really thriving community as well.
Tiana is out of the Young Workers Centre at Trades Hall, where she was a lawyer, so represents huge numbers of young workers who, for them, when they are having a wage justice matter, it's so they can pay their rent.
Yeah. Thank you. Ms Mansfield?
Thank you, and thank you for appearing today. And I think, I think everyone would agree, we want to see more housing, we want to see more affordable housing. One of the things is that we, that this inquiry is looking at is the specific detail of these amendments and whether they're the best way to deliver that. And one thing we've heard is that quite a bit of criticism, in particular about VC 267, which is the new res code changes. There's been a bit of a consistent theme of concern coming through about the potential lowering of ESD standards, the wide range of exemptions, that means that housing could potentially be built in a flood risk area or on contaminated land. And I think Mr Davis touched on, you know, changes to vegetation and tree canopy. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on whether, you know, they are areas, you know, that would be worth looking at improving, at the very least, in that particular planning scheme amendment?
Yeah, I'm not going to dispute that with you at all. What I would say is that we, I don't know who said it about how doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome is just madness. We've had this, these residential codes in place for a while, there was obviously a need to change. Like there was feedback, and you've heard from planners today talking about, there was need for change. Does that mean that this is perfect? No. Do you know what I mean? There's the consistency that it has applied, the sector was calling for. Let's see if that has the response that, let's see that that results in more housing approvals and more housing supply, that would be my hope. But am I, I would say that from the perspective of the commentary I made beforehand as well too, I want nothing but the best for the working class and for working people, so I do want the highest possible standards that we can advocate for in terms of energy efficiency, electrification, all of those sorts of things as well too. Is this amendment the place to do that? I would hand that back over to planners and to, and to yourselves to make decisions about where's the best place to be putting in best possible housing standards for workers to be, to be moving into. And I was thinking about it and reflecting on it this morning as well too, and it's not just the new stuff that's being built, but it's the upgrades of the stock that we already have, and rebate and support from government to make that happen for working people is, is critical as well too. So I don't know if that answers your question entirely, but hopefully you can see my sentiment.
Yeah, well, I think what, one of the things that this committee is considering is, you know, can we work with the, you know, are the, are the amendments that are there okay? Do they need changes? Or should we scrap, you know, some or all of them and start again?
Yeah.
And they're questions that, you know, we're all trying to grapple with, and as I said, we're getting some fairly consistent criticism about different aspects of different amendments, but particularly VC 267, on those particular areas, and just whether you felt that there is room for improvement.
Always room for improvement in government. So I'm never going to dispute that.
They're perfect at the other end.
Always. I don't think I can add more to that. Always room, always room for improvement. We should constantly be. And the other thing is, especially in this area as well, sustainability, like we're just making leaps and bounds too in terms of technology and what's the next best thing to do. So I think, yes, we should be constantly making improvements there. The component where it's provided a consistent standard, having been on one of 79 different councils, I do appreciate having consistent rules across, across residential zoning. There's some appeal in that too.
Okay, thank you. Ms Chris?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much for being before the committee this morning. Could you answer, does Trades Hall have any concerns regarding urban heritage planning and the ability for heritage considerations to be considered in these planning amendments?
Absolutely. We are guardians of and protectors of one of the, I would say one of the best buildings in Trades Hall in the city.
So it's important to you?
Heritage aspect? Heritage is absolutely important.
What about in suburbs though?
Absolutely as well too, people, you know, our, what some people might find ugly, I find beautiful because it's workers' history, you know, some of the buildings that are in some of our industrial areas as well too. All I'd say is that I'm not a heritage expert, and I would defer to those on that one, but we should have, and my understanding is there's still some supports and protections around heritage overlay, and if a, if a, a building needs protecting.
Okay, but you wouldn't consider, for instance, tearing down Trades Hall to put up a, to put up a tall tower?
It's, we're currently, it's a state heritage listed building, national heritage listed, and we're going for world heritage listing, but we're not objecting to, we're not, we're not objecting to-
And that's my point. That's my point.
Yeah, it's-
No, no, if I can move on?
No, but I would say, I would say, but we're not objecting to around Trades Hall. There's some, we support development in the city as well too.
If I could just move on?
But there's strict heritage restrictions on now.
Some things get heritage, but others not.
Thank you. In your submission, you've said unions have long stood by the principle that workers should be consulted on issues that affect them, both in the workplace and the community, and you've gone very extensively in your evidence today before the committee. There are people that work in retail, they work in public transport, they work all over the area, all over Melbourne, that live in these suburbs, which have, are going to be impacted by heritage destruction when some of these amendments are considered. They haven't had a voice through their council, they feel very strongly about that. What do you say to those workers that have been impacted?
Yeah, I would be really concerned. I would want workers to feel like they have a say, and if they feel like they haven't, I'd be concerned about what their local council is doing to-
But they're being-
They're being, they're not allowed to. My experience is that we-
Not under this government. The councils have been overruled, and that is the part of the problem.
Local councils have been doing, and again, you know, I refer to previous experience that I have, we had a, we had a heritage committee, we had regular and ongoing consultation around all elements of the planning scheme as well too. And I would hope that local councils would keep, would continue with that and keep doing that.
One last question. You mentioned, you mentioned the airport. There's roughly 18 to 20,000 people out there, no infrastructure. Why is this, why do you not support developing homes closer to that area where there's retail, ground handling, those blue collar workers that you are, you know, talking about? Why don't you support greater housing out there that's closer to their workplace?
I think one of the best solutions we'll have to get workers closer to the airport is with Airport Rail as well too, and the TWU have been a passionate advocate for Airport Rail as well too. I, I don't know, that probably doesn't answer your question. I don't know, that probably doesn't answer your question, but we would say that we do need to balance up location. Again, this is the challenge of government, I recognise that, is balancing up locations...
That's the point.
Balance out where we do the housing, balance of location. There was lots of speakers this morning that talked about infill versus moving out further into agriculture.
I think government's confused about that balance.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for coming in today. I wanted to sort of riff off Ms Crozier's line of questioning about houses where workers need them. I wonder if you could reflect on, you know, one of the things that the set of planning scheme amendments is trying to do is to provide more opportunities for people to access housing in more established suburbs. Now, the new activity centres...
Close to the airport.
New activity centres, the 10 pilot sites, and also the 50 around tram and train zones are predominantly in areas that are more established and where there are greater transport links. Wondering if you can reflect on your experience of the sorts of employment that we see in those areas and the need for people who, for example, work in supermarkets, retail strips, hospitals, nurses, community-based aged care workers, childcare workers in these established suburbs, and some of the challenges that they might be facing in terms of housing unaffordability and the consequences and the impacts that that has on their ability to live close to where they work and the consequences of having to live far away from where they work in these communities.
Yeah. I'd make just two comments on this quickly, thank you for your question, which is, number one, the thing that appeals, and I kind of alluded to it beforehand, the thing that appeals about activity centres for the workers is that you can do multiple activities there too, right? You do your job, you do your shopping, you put the kids into childcare, you go to the gym. It's that component that I really appreciate as well too. I haven't had, we haven't been able to, because it was such on a short timeframe, we haven't been able to, and I really did want to collect more qualitative research from workers.
You're talking about the timeframe you had to prepare a submission for this inquiry?
For this inquiry.
Timeframes were short for this inquiry. It curtailed our capacity to get into some of these issues in depth, but please go on.
Yeah, so it does mean that, we did that survey last year, which provides some data, but I really wish we could have gone back to unpack it with those workers. But I would refer to, I was reading it last night, the nurses' submission to the Key Worker Housing Inquiry from across the border, we won't name that state. The stories that they have collected, and a whole bunch of unions made submissions, the stories they have collected about the impact of travel time and the impact on accessing affordable housing and what that means for workers was incredible. Like, the impact is enormous, and workers talked about, and this is nurses, talked about having to constantly move because they're in a rental situation, being dependent upon their partner for financial security, kids at a different school at a different childcare centre, and the impact that has and the stress that that has. And I think, I hope that sort of answers your question. And I think that workers talk a lot about the quality, they talk to, I'm talking to a lot of workers right now. It's a federal elections, it's a federal election time, we're calling a lot of union members. And they're talking about, and they're talking about, they're talking about, they want good jobs, not just for themselves but for their kids, and they want good housing, not just for themselves, for their kids. So that, being close to the community that you grew up in, that your parents still live in, is still actually critically important too, which is why these amendments about infill will help keep people close to schools and close to parents and close to communities.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Mrs MacArthur?
Thank you both for being here today. Great to have you. Now, as a former mayor and councillor...
I didn't realise I was going to get so many questions in this. I meant to be here with my Trades Hall hat on, please.
Well, actually, you alluded to the fact that you've got this wonderful experience. It's my information from the councils that are talking to me that they have had little or no consultation with the government over these amendments. None whatsoever, but some have actually been told, some have actually been told that they're actually going to have to pick up a lot of the cost of infrastructure associated with these tall towers centres. So do you think, as a former mayor and councillor, that's acceptable? That the burden of infrastructure falls on the ratepayers in these areas?
It's a topic dear to my heart, actually, is that local councils would argue that they disproportionately carry the burden of local infrastructure, particularly when it comes to roads, they would argue. So I would always advocate and support...
A lot of roads in the city of Yarra.
And ASU members, of which we are both a union of, who represent local council workers, will, I'll always advocate for more funding for community infrastructure, for community projects, all of the things that make our local communities better. I'll always advocate for.
But that's not happening, is it? Because the government is saying to these councils that they will be picking up these extra infrastructure costs. So the ratepayers will bear the burden. Is that acceptable from your point of view?
Absolutely. I think that all levels of government should be contributing to making sure that our communities are wonderful, and the state government should be contributing just as much as the local council and federal. Let's all be... We should all be...
Well, that's going to affect your workers, though. The rates will inevitably have to go up, even though there's rate capping, but the rate in the dollar is a major issue. So, you know, many of these councils will have to go into debt. Is that acceptable?
I'd be really concerned about that. There's been some concerning impacts about that in New South Wales, where we've had to see, you know, council amalgamations as well. So I would want to ensure, and I would hope that all of our local councils are suitably and properly funded to provide the support that communities need.
But that's exactly what's not happening under this proposal.
It's only been in action for a couple of months, so I look forward to seeing the impact.
Well, that's the problem with the lack of consultation, isn't it? That's occurred through local government. There basically has been no consultation. They've had these amendments imposed on them, they've had where they're going to be imposed on them, the number of tall towers, et cetera, imposed on them, no consultation whatsoever. And you talk about the importance of constantly, you said, constantly consulting with the workers. Now, the workers are the ratepayers in these areas, and they have not been consulted. So do you accept it's been a totally unreasonable approach by the government?
I can only speak to the consultation that we have experienced with the principle we should all be consulted. And I would, I haven't had conversations with our local council members, so I can't speak to the consultation that they've received there.
Well, maybe, maybe you should investigate.
With more time, I look forward to going and talking to our ASU.
Well, that's the problem with this, isn't it? Nobody's had the time, people have not had the time to do the consultation. Do you accept that?
I was referring to the consultation required for this particular inquiry.
Okay, thank you. Well, leave it there. Fussi, thank you to you both for attending today. It's really appreciated. We know it was at very short notice. My apologies.
Well, I'll be quick.
No, it's all right. I'm for my snuff up.
I'm happy to go quickly. I just want to go to point two of your submission, which speaks to inequality of the distribution of housing. In particular, you note that communities with traditionally working communities, such as Melton, had a growth of 433%, and Wyndham growing by 346% over the last 30 years. And then looking at some other areas closer to the city, including Bayside, and their limited growth to only 28% over that same period of time. Do you have any further comments about what that actually means in terms of access to quality services for working people in these areas? Because whilst you've talked a lot about childcare and aged care, I do note that these communities, such as Melton and Wyndham and others, have limited childcare, aged care, and other social infrastructure. They bring the quality questions to bear about quality of life and livability.
It's something that I, thank you for the question, it's something that I feel really deeply about, equality and equality across the whole of our city, more broadly, Victoria as well. I don't want Geelong and Ballarat to be excluded in this conversation as well too. But all of the, this inner city versus the outer suburb and the ring of, we need to make sure that we've got quality access to services out in the outer suburbs as well too. But this is, I note that there were some speakers earlier who talked about how infill is more expensive than growth corridors and stuff like that. Like, I'll put that aside. The question is about, workers have just as much, workers should be able to live and work in a community that, they should have just as much choice over that as anyone else who's lived there for 50 years or more prior as well too. I want all parts of our city to be accessible to workers. And it is an inequality that some people have schools and hospitals and childcare centres on their doorstep, and some of us don't. So we need to have equitable access to that and equitable access to transport to get to those facilities as well too.
And I think also, you know, seeing people forced out of their communities is something that we're really worried about as well. I think that those stats really, to me, speak to the fact that some communities have shouldered the growth that we've seen. And of course, every worker deserves housing, but is that housing quality? I think that's what those stats really speak to about me, is seeing that all workers deserve quality housing.
Mr Davis?
With access to quality amenities, if I can make that condition.
Thank you for that. That's my question.
Thank you very much. Again, my thanks to you for attending today on very short notice. Could I just note that you'll shortly receive a copy of transcript for review before it's published on the website? We're going to take a break now until 1.35, when we'll be joined by the Property Council of Australia, the Housing Industry Association, and the Urban Development Institute. So we'll leave it there, and thank you very much.